Live from the city building in Athens, Ohio, your local source for live city meetings. TGC 15 presents Athens City Council.
Good evening. Welcome to Athens City Council. I am the City Auditor, Mr. Helfen White. The TGC City Council is meeting first in a special session, then an executive session, and we will have a series of committee meetings. So it should be a long night. We do have a quorum with, I believe, very shortly at least six of seven members. One should be in the hallway. Hopefully she gets in here. Ordinances for second reading. Ordinance 10408, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into agreements with University Courtyard and McDonald Transportation to provide bus service to the apartment complex and declaring an emergency. Ordinance 10508, an ordinance authorizing design engineering of a new salt bin, project number 242. Ordinance 10608, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of chloride, I'm sorry, chlorine, fluoride, salt, caustic soda, and sulfur dioxide. Ordinance 10708, an ordinance amending ordinance 03908, accepting a limited warranty deed from Athens O8 LLC Holzer Clinic. Ordinance 10808, an ordinance amending ordinance 04008, accepting a perpetual easement from Hawking River Properties Limited to the city of Athens for the construction of an access road to Holzer Clinic and adjacent businesses. Ordinance 10908, as an ordinance amending ordinance 04108, accepting a perpetual easement from R Future Development Limited to the city of Athens for the construction of an access road to Holzer Clinic and adjacent businesses. Ordinance 11008, as an ordinance amending ordinance 04208, accepting a perpetual easement from, here we go, Siriji Motel, Inc., to the city of Athens for the construction of an access road to Holzer and adjacent businesses. Ordinance 11108, an ordinance amending the 2008 appropriation ordinance and authorizing an inter-fund transfer to provide the city's local match for the community housing improvement program. Mayor Wile.
You can take a breath now, Bill.
Okay. Thank you.
That's all I had to say.
That's all you had to say. On to resolutions for second reading. R 0808 is a resolution establishing responsible contractor bid criteria which were introduced by all members of council. The next item on our agenda is an executive session at which we will be discussing some upcoming collective bargaining. I believe we will be moving-
Couldn't you say personnel issues too because of the benefits posted?
Yes. Both issues we are able to go into executive session for. So it will be both for collective bargaining and personnel issues. I think we are going to have council move to council office. That would be easier. That way we can let people stay comfortable there where we are, where they are. And the people that we would like at executive session, who is calling up?
A consultant, the administration.
Okay. Oh, the administration.
That's here.
Which shall include Mayor Wile, City Auditor Kathy Heck, Personnel Director Beverly Henderson, Service Safety Director Paula Harez, and Mike, I'm sorry, I don't-
Michael Willshire.
Michael Shire.
Willshire.
Will Shire, I'm sorry. The hearing is going. And Law Director Patrick Lang.
Before you go, could you please remind us who will be in charge of being the spokesperson when we come out of executive session, please?
Is that me?
Yes. I don't know. I just think that if I hear on the radio again tomorrow morning about what happened in our-
Well, we will have that discussion while we are in there. But yeah, I don't think there will be any discussion about what goes on in executive session. Mayor Wile, did you have a question?
Are we including Ray? Is he going to get off that?
I'm sorry.
Well, isn't he part of the administration?
Well, that's because the auditor was hiding Ray back there. And Ray, we would like for you to attend also.
That's on purpose.
Ray Hazlitt, Deputy-
I wonder if it'd be easier to move other people out?
I think it probably would be because we're down to just a couple of people and they can make themselves comfortable out there.
You think of sitting in the council office. It's really nice.
Yeah. Rummage through the drawers, see what's in the files.
Eat the candy.
Help yourself to the candy on the desk that the clerk keeps.
Actually, we may have to move in because people are going to be-
If you need an outside line, press seven on the phone. That's right. I think it would be easier. Okay. With all that said, council will retire and we will be going into executive session. May I ask for a motion to move into executive session?
Motion.
Second.
Motion and the second. Butler, Coon, Bane, Phillips, Sim, Lahu. Okay. And hopefully by-
I guess we're going.
Seven?
We won't be back by seven, but as soon as the session is over, we will be back for committee meetings. Well, we're back. Welcome back to City Council. It's honor about 7:30. We're a little bit late in getting our community issues committee. We've got five committee meetings ahead of us. So let's get started with the first one on the agenda. That's community issues. Jim Sanes.
Mr. President, I'd like right now to introduce Kim Welter. She's the Program Manager for Education and Outreach of Equality, Ohio. She's asking council support in of a House bill, House and Senate bill in the Ohio General Assembly prohibiting discriminatory practices. So we, council has had copies of the proposed resolution and the questions around that for several weeks now. So I'm going to ask Ms. Welter to say a few words and then answer questions if there are any. Thank you.
Welcome.
President Bias, Council, thank you for giving me a few minutes of your time. Equality, Ohio is the statewide advocacy organization for lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgender citizens, including those here in Athens. Currently in the state, it is legal to fire somebody for being gay, straight, bisexual, or transgender, to kick them out of a restaurant, to deny them a mortgage, or to deny them a rental. House Bill, and I always get them confused, House Bill 502 and Senate Bill 305 would simply add sexual orientation and gender identity to the existing civil rights laws. So there's nothing new. It's just adding those to what already exists. As you can imagine, it's an uphill fight for us, and support from around the state is important. We've been working with businesses, social justice organizations, faith leaders, and municipalities in getting Ohioans to say that they support this bill. It would be the first time in Ohio ever that there was any pro-equality legislation here in the state. It has never existed before. So I'm asking you today to join currently, and we're still working on others, Toledo, Bowling Green, Cleveland Heights, Springfield, Lucas County, and Franklin County as municipalities that are publicly supporting this legislation. And I can answer questions if you have them.
Any questions or concerns? Let me say two things. This proposal was passed to our Community Relations Commission, and they came back 100% in support of it. And John Schmieding couldn't be here tonight, but I think he's planning to come at our first reading to speak to that. Also, in April of 2007, member Bishop, Lochenka Bishop, introduced a resolution that led Athens to join the partnership of inclusive communities, which follows some of the same guidelines that these other resolutions do. So we've already, we're taking the right steps already. Any questions or concerns? This would come out of committee as a resolution, probably a three-reading resolution if we have consensus here. Ilahou?
I just wanted to say thanks for coming. This is a very important issue, and it's an outrage that we even have to be facing this right now, I think, in the state and in the country. And this is a positive step, I think, towards equality and ending this discrimination that does occur.
Thank you.
No? Nancy, do you remember what year it was that we added it to our own?
No, I don't remember.
Yeah. But this body has already passed that for protection within the city.
Athens has sexual orientation, but not gender identity.
1986 or 1987.
Did you hear what she said?
I'm sorry.
Athens has sexual orientation, but not gender identity.
That's correct.
And by the way, the passage at the state level would actually save city money because if you have somebody bringing a case to the city right now, the city would have to investigate. If it becomes state law, the investigation passes to the Ohio Civil Rights Commission and saves the city the money of investigating.
Thank you. Any other comments?
So what's the timeline on these bills passing?
There is a good chance that it will be passed out of committee yet this year in the Senate. And the expectation is if it goes to the Senate floor this year that it would pass. But that's just the Senate. We will probably reintroduce that in the House in February and hope that it does pass in the House next year.
Okay. We will bring this out of committee as a resolution for first reading on our next regular meeting, which is to be through tonight. Okay? Thank you, Ms. Welter.
You're going to introduce a little more of the council.
Yes. And secondly, I would like to introduce our new city planner, our only city planner, Paul Logue, who would like to introduce himself to council and give us a quick overview of what he's working on right now.
Well, good evening. Thank you for inviting me tonight. As you said, my name is Paul Logue. I am the city planner, the planning staff, the planning office. Take it for basically all those things. I think I've been full-time now since August 6th of this year, so I'm coming up on a little bit over two months. A lot of what I've been working on so far has been catching up on the background of what's been going on, reading, learning the comprehensive plan. I've also been working intently on learning and trying to figure out Title 41, trying to see how we can simplify it or at least streamline the process. There's been so few projects that have gone through Title 41 yet that a lot of us don't feel like we fully understand what is expected from it. A lot of developers don't seem to, and it doesn't seem like we really have a good process down with how to get through a Title 41 site review yet. So a lot of what I've been working on does relate to that. I've also taken over the floodplain administration that used to be done out of the code enforcement office. So I've been spending a lot of time learning about floodplains, learning about the firm maps, the flood insurance studies, and really trying to understand how that works and what's expected of me if we have an emergency where we would have to address any major significant flood issues. Other than that, a lot of it is attending some meetings. I serve on the transportation subcommittees, the pedestrian and bicycling subcommittee, street parking. I work with the Athens Uptown Business Association. We're trying to get several things going right now with the Court Street, with the Uptown, and the B2D zone, which we would likely be looking for additional support from council coming up. What I'd like to really look at and talk about with council is what do you expect or do you think we should be working on as it relates to the comprehensive plan? We just have, we've got the site plan review in place now, but we also have floodplain regulations that are about to be completed. And there are several things in the comprehensive plan that are, that need to go through council in order to get initiated. And should we, should I be forming task forces on some of these things? Historic preservation was one, an overlay for the Uptown Business District. We had talked about design standards for some of the neighborhoods and things. All of those things are going to need council support. And I'd like to gauge any interest on council right now to be working on these issues. I'm at a point where I don't have, the history part and the back learning, I think, I'm pretty much coming to an end with that. So it is time to really start looking forward at what we're going to do to implement the comprehensive plan.
Councilmember.
We created the Comprehensive Plan Review and Advisory Committee, which you're on-
Correct.
To work on the performance measurement and process for implementing the plan. I mean, so that commission really should be trying to, you know, help us work, help council work through what we do to move things ahead.
Okay. What we're working on right now with the Comprehensive Plan Advisory Committee, we're establishing the indicators and benchmarks as they reflect in the comprehensive plan, what the plan says, what our data, where we exist right now to set a baseline, what we need to do to move forward and to see better indicators and progress going forward. But there are a few things in the comprehensive, the plan itself, the regulatory initiatives that were already suggested, and should we be convening a task force? Issues like the buffer yards, the historic preservation district overlay, are any of those types of issues, some of the things that council would be interested in us working on right now?
I mean, I think that the initial steps that we took as a council were, you know, working on creating a planning department to get some, you know, particular expertise and assistance in implementing the plan.
Okay.
So, yes. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. So, I mean, probably you and I need to sit down and talk about where we go next. And it's probably more a planning and development committee issue.
Agreed. Agreed. Member Bane?
I believe that we tried to actually add Debbie Call to see if there was somebody at OHS that could give us some help with historic preservation. Because I don't think, other than Mary Ann Peters, who works for Ohio Historical Society, I don't think there's anyone who's particularly well-versed in the kinds of things that you would need in order to do that. And I think that if you, if I remember right, unless it got dropped out, there was a part about doing a survey, inventory on historic-
Of historic.
Right. And I think that was, you know, supposedly, I thought, was going to be a consultant's job because it's not something that, I mean, if you say the word pediment, how many people even know what it means? And, you know, that's not something we're all versed in. Just if you hang, if you hang around with Mary Ann a little bit, I suppose you would be. But more important for me anyway is that I thought that there were several different versions of hillside ordinances, and we sort of got caught in the middle on those before. And it seems that, you know, maybe you could tell us who we might, how we can combine those together. And then there's, my constituents tell me consistently that they think our ordinances are terribly out of date. That's the image out there. I don't know where they could have gotten it. But they have, and, you know, zoning and subdivision regulations, and we have taken out our own appendix a few times, and I don't know, you see the product of it right there. You know how bad it is, how wordy it is, how out of date it is.
Agreed.
And, yeah, I know, that's it. And so, you know, I think we need to know where to go next on that. You know, historic preservation, I mean, plug your ears, people out there, but I think that it's a second, a second seat to hillside and updated zoning ordinance. And so, and I guess that we'd probably look for some help.
And I think the comprehensive plan recommended additional zones, an R4 zone for one, and changing some of the R3 wording.
Right. Like a high-density zone. And those are not, you know, those have got to be like wounded knee type of standoffs and with the old planning commission. And it just doesn't have to be that way, you know? What is going to be going on? What density levels do we want? What kinds of trades, trade-offs do we want? Is there any way that we can update our ordinance, simplify it? I mean, that means more than taking out the millinery shop. You know, there are other things, and things got dropped off that maybe shouldn't have, and, you know, so on and so forth. It seemed like a good idea at the time, but I don't know that it really worked out. That's, and that's my two cents. I'd like to see hillside and zoning before anything else, maybe housing too.
And I would echo the interest on the hillside.
Yeah. Especially on the south side.
Yeah. Been a committee working on that for a long time, and, you know, different citizen and neighborhood input, but certainly use some expertise and movement forward on that.
Going back to underline it, though, it does appear as three places or two places in the code, right? And so one time they'll say, oh, do this, Title 27. But it's also in the subdivision regulation, so which one are you going to follow? And you know that, I think, from reading it, Paul. It's kind of a mess.
Good intentions.
Oh, yes. It's the road to hell.
And, you know, for a little bit of historic perspective on some of these ordinances, there were some very significant changes made to the subdivision regs and the zoning code prior to my time on council. It was just immediately before then. And one of the first things that we worked on with the new folks who came on was really looking through, because when those changes were made, there were some inadvertent misreferences and some things that had been dropped. And so we combed through the subdivision regs and brought that to be more internally consistent. But with the zoning code going back and forth between council and the planning commission, that's where we still have some, you know, places that need work. And I think that our hope in hiring a planner was to bring in someone who had a wider perspective on zoning and planning, who could help us work through that. So we're glad you're here.
I'm glad to be here.
Do you guys need any? No? Okay. Well, oh, Mayor.
Some of the other things I've had Paul do is, he's doing some of the operations that people come through with subdivisions within the three-mile limit, as well as some of the critiquing of Title 41 and other developments that approached us. He's also been working with Elaine Getz on the well floodplain information. He mentioned the floodplain maps. We have a preliminary floodplain map that's waiting public input. And as you well know, the zoning map has been put together or reestablished, so that's also in your room there. So he's been busy doing that type of stuff. I'm setting on various training seminars as well, Sustainable Code, I think you brought, you did last month.
Yep.
As well as some land use planning training as well. So we're going to get fresh input as well. So I'm keeping him busy.
And fresh input, I think, is what we were looking for as well as direction. So hopefully you got some answers here to some of your concerns.
I appreciate it.
Okay. We appreciate you coming. Hope you're back often with all kinds of good stuff.
I'll drag you back.
Yeah. It's hard to adopt.
Anytime you need.
Thank you. I don't have any miscellaneous for the committee. Member Bane?
I just wanted to say that I received a request to update the noise ordinance. I don't know how it gets to be my job, but anyway. What I found is that the police, even though I had, we had sent them the copy, used the earlier version, so I sent it back to them with the new updated version. So if those of you are waiting with bated breath to find out what's going to happen in the noise ordinance, and then once it's back, I'll send it, have Debbie make the changes they suggest, and then we'll send it to the judge. Because last time, we did send it to the police, and we did send it to the judge, and we'll see what we end up with. Probably a more obscure ordinance than we have right now. Okay. I just want you to know it's coming attractions, a month or so, maybe.
And that's all we have for community issues.
All right. Well, the first thing on my agenda is the Chamber of Commerce. We've been over a couple times the structural changes that are going on there, and Jennifer Simon is here to talk to us tonight. And it looks like a couple of chamber board members are here with you as well. Jennifer passed around the business plan, business plan and the bylaws for the Economic Development Council. So those should, everybody should have had a copy on your desk when we came back out of executive session. And I don't think anything big structurally has changed since the last time we talked about it, but it was a lot to digest at that time. And where we're at with this is the existing contract with the chamber is finished at the end of this calendar year. And with the changes that are being made, we're talking about, you know, entering a new contract and, I believe, attaching this business plan, these deliverables to that contract. So it would be different from the deliverables on the existing contract because it's very specifically these economic development goals and activities that are outlined here. So hand it over to you, Jennifer.
Sure. The change in the document from when you had last seen is obviously we added the city of Athens as one of the organizations to be in the Athens County Economic Development Council. But on the business plan itself, if you look at the bottom where it says, how are we going to meet our objectives? What I did is put a little bit more meat to the bone so that you could see specifically for attraction and marketing what our plan is, specifically for retention and expansion, what does our plan include, and for entrepreneurship. So we, I've then taken that and put it into an organizational plan for staffing, committee work, et cetera. So it's really just adding a little bit more meat to that, to that bone that we had originally looked at. And I know that Councilwoman Nysley had talked about, you know, having a little bit more, you know, on paper, and I hope that this answers that particular question.
I don't know how much detail you want me to go into, Debbie. You know, I think we've been over this. So really, you know, in my mind, what this accomplishes is creates a cleaner, more transparent relationship as far as what the city's doing around economic development. With the way it has been in recent years, sometimes because the chamber performs economic development work for the city and the county and provides member services, you know, sometimes there have been tensions with that member advocacy role, which is an appropriate role for the chamber to play, but, you know, doesn't, you know, sometimes is in conflict with things the city is working on. So I think this makes it a really clean relationship in terms of our investment in economic development in the community. What I think we would actually attach to the contract would be the first three pieces of paper here, pages one through six. I really don't think the job descriptions and all of that belong there, but just the overall business plan and those measurable objectives. So at this point, I think we should just open it up to, you know, any council members who have questions or comments about the proposal. And I don't believe that anything significant has changed in the governance and in the bylaws since, other than the fact that we are officially there. Questions? Comments? Ilahou?
No, I just wanted to point out that there is a section here for the Real Estate Development Committee. So that, as I understand, maybe you can speak to this, Jennifer. It would maybe help guide development in terms of what the city wants and what realtors and the business people that are doing the construction would want.
Right. Sort of has two functions. One's to be sort of a lead opportunity so as leads come, get those leads properly out to those who have buildings or sites in a fair, equitable way. And then the second is definitely to work with the city's comprehensive plan and the county's comprehensive plan, and what's our existing infrastructure, where do we want to see that growth, really putting that together so that we can build out. And we've talked about Albany to Athens and, you know, that in-between, and, you know, what can we do there if that's the appropriate place? So that's going to take some real focus on infrastructure, so that's part of that, that particular committee.
Thanks.
Did that answer your question?
It did, yeah.
Okay. Nancy?
Yeah, I guess I wonder how you will decide where the appropriate place is, what kind of interaction will you have with the city council? I mean, it seems like the chamber would kind of fill out its contract, and then we'd only see them back when they were with somebody, holding their hand. And so I guess I'd like to know how you're going to decide that.
I think it comes from a governance structure. I mean, the governance structure is, you know, we have the full-
Have we seen that already, Jennifer? The governance structure? Have we seen it operating in the existing system that we have?
I think in a piecemeal way. I think this is an opportunity to strengthen that, that governance structure, and that was really one of the purposes for doing this, is so that there's collaboration with the city, the county, Ohio University, and the other players around the county in order to, you know, to really make sure that it's an inclusive opportunity for economic development. So I think the governance structure with the full institutional members, you know, really can, and the city obviously would be a full partner at that table, could assist us in guiding that.
Well, I guess I'm a little skeptical because I go back to the COG period in our history. Sometimes age has its limitations. But we did have a COG situation where the county said, you really should be doing this to the- said, "You really should be doing this to the city," and they said it about once too often, so we eliminated the COG. So council of governments, a super organization. I guess I'd like to know, Jennifer, as I talk to my constituents, how am I gonna say, gee, we're cutting salaries, I mean, we're cutting positions, I should say, potentially in the next few weeks, and yet we're giving $50,000 to this organization? What benefits will we see in a year? I know what you've got written down, but what am I gonna see? Because I, people have said to me, "Why are you still doing that chamber contract?" I mean, I know it's a new, the chamber already told me they were the new, wonderful new chamber, but the perception is that, you know, this is the chamber and we're the city. And they're all oriented toward infrastructure and land use, rather than perhaps some of this. Any ideas how I can pose that argument?
Well, I think we are focusing on all the same industries that the, I think that council and through the comprehensive plan have been identified as priority industries. I mean, we're working on the energy, energy-based economic development, and we're working on specialty food and agriculture development. We're, you know, focusing on things that are Athens, not, you know, the one-size-fits-all kind of companies. I mean, this is targeted, what do we, what do we want to do? At the end of the day, when you do look at the measurables and the outcomes, I mean, that's, that's what we're gonna deliver. You know, I don't know what else to say to you, other than it, everything that's in here has been, we've taken input from multiple organizations and people, and, you know, I've really been involved over the last four years, I think, with different constituencies that, you know, on the Peak Oil Task Force now, and, you know, I've been, I've worked with Appalachian Ohio Sierra Club on different projects. So, you know, I think there is some marriage in some of these initiatives, that it's, it's a, you know, it's a new day.
Okay. So continuing on with the question then, give me an example of a development that started as a sort of top-down, meeting-oriented development, that's better than some of our homegrown grassroots development? I mean, I don't know if you can really, you can really create the environment to have on these people who have done these fabulous things, as in Third Son, Dovetail, CFI. I mean, we did a small number of things over time when they came in and talked to us, but, I mean, what will $50,000 buy over and above what the people who are really thinking about what to do and have a plan, what will we get from that? What will they get from it? How will you fit with them? Because I don't, you know, I don't think they, they didn't really need to get those ideas out into where they are. I mean, they might have used the Innovation Center or something like that, but, I mean, there are lots of vehicles. So how, what is good, how will this add to that? I mean, because our, our image in the rest of the state is fabulous in the food area, in CSAs and things like that, way before everyone else. I could take my students to Ohio State and Egg Department, and they'd tell me how good it is here. It had nothing to do, that I know of, with the apparatus you're talking about. Also, what about the solar? I mean, again, it was some, somebody who had an idea and moved it forward. So, I mean, what will we get for $50,000 with respect to that sort of grassroots, "I know what I want to do, I want to start this business"?
Well, I can tell you, I've worked with, I've been working with Third Son.
As, you know, and so have I. I've actually been paying.
That's, I haven't done that yet. You know, we've, we've helped them look at other places to, you know, because they have to graduate out of the incubator, helped them look at funding opportunities, you know, places where, you know, they may build partnerships. I mean, they do an incredible job on their own, but our job is almost as that facilitator to assist in finding additional resources. You know, and with the, in particular with energy, I mean, we're, we're looking at a partnership with Ohio University. I can't say a lot about it right now, but with Ohio University, and I've had a couple folks from the city looking at a company that takes trash, and it was a trash-to-diesel, you know, and really trying to find a way to locate that kind of a company in our county, where there would be benefit to the city. However, you know, we, we have an opportunity to be able to, to work on, on those kinds of projects. So it's a lot of finding locations, it's a lot of matching people up. We have a lot of connections at the state level with Mark Shanahan, for example, who's the energy czar for the state of Ohio, worked with him on, on other projects. And so I just had a meeting with Mark last week. So he knows about the research that's happening at Ohio University, trying to find ways in order to take that research and push it out, create small companies that then can become, you know, larger companies. That's, that's, you know, that's one area, the energy piece is one area. So, I mean-
I want to jump in on that, too, because, you know, I went with you to a site visit to one of the businesses here that was thinking of potentially leaving, to, you know, talk with them about what they needed, what they were looking for, and, you know, work on keeping them here in our, in the city. And I think that you also helped Dovetail find a building that worked for them.
Right.
And I think that you also worked with American Hydrogen and Megs County Chamber to help them graduate out and find a location, to be able to bring 100 jobs to the area, even though it's not right here in Athens County. That kind of networking and collaboration is what I've seen that is valuable. I mean, I, I think that there's, what I like about this structure is that it's really trying to build the partnerships, because we have a lot of people, a lot of individuals who are doing really important innovative work. And it can be hard, when you're running your own, you know, fledgling company, to know what's out there as far as opportunities. So sometimes just that networking and connection to the other folks who can help can stabilize those companies and help them make, make it through those stages of growth. That, that's what I have seen, just because we've been working together on some of this.
But this would normally be a chamber function, wouldn't it?
And it has been, but in most communities, I think the Chamber of Commerce is about member services, and economic development is separate from that.
Maybe. Chris?
Could I also add, too? Nancy, my hearing may be, though, an interest, you know, what do we do about infrastructure issues? And so one example might be, or, you know, or ways in which we could have projects that might benefit. And one of the ones that I'm aware of, that you were working on, was getting together a broadband council, where there might be advantages, then, for that high-speed access for other businesses that are locating out of state, healthcare facilities, you know, linking those up with the university. So maybe those are the kinds of things, too, that, you know, where there would be an advantage to businesses and to the city.
Well, actually, Chris, Megs County and Morgan County are way ahead of us on this. At least, that's what I've heard over time. They had broadband way before, I mean, it was a major issue for them earlier. So, I mean, and not to put too fine a point on it, but I guess I'm a little bit skeptical, and that's why I'm asking these questions. You know, call me a skeptic, it's okay. Call me other things.
Bill?
I'm gonna put, you know what I'm gonna do, don't you, Jim? I'm not speaking to, is this a good idea or a bad idea? I don't know. What year were you president of the chamber?
04.
04?
Yeah.
1904?
Seriously, it was probably 10 or 12 years ago.
10 or 12 years ago, when I was sitting over there and was head of the Finance Committee, I was visited by the president of the Chamber of Commerce, Member Sands here, I've never met him before, that I remember, to say, "We won't be asking for this money anymore. If you can only see to it that you helped us get through this year, and go ahead and introduce this contract one more time, I see the chamber being able to get their budget in order, so that we will not have to ask for government money for an organization that is extremely rare to receive government money." So, you know, I don't know whether this is a good idea or a bad idea, and I'm not gonna speak to it, but it's an unusual idea for other cities to do this, and we've done it now for, Peg Cohen was the first one I remember that introduced it, and that probably would have been 1990, and like many things that happen in the government, once it gets started-
It never ends.
-it goes on and on and on, because it's easier to just redo it than to really take a look at it and do something different. Now, again, maybe this is the answer, is to separate these things, and I appreciate the hard work that you've done on this, Jennifer, and maybe this is the right way to go, so that it isn't the same kind of thing. But that's what I know about the contract over the nearly 20 years I've sat here. Thank you.
Can I maybe say something about that?
Sure.
Bill. It's different in every county and every city, you know. Some cities will create their own Department of Economic Development, some counties will have their own. In smaller counties, there's typically a relationship, just like with the health department, you know, where you have some shared overlap. And I think with the organizational approach, the EDC, Economic Development Council, gaining opportunity to not only bring in the resources to be able to strengthen that partnership, but I think you're also bringing in the ability to have broader ideas, broader participation, et cetera. So I know what you're saying, money that had been brought into the chamber, where, you know, economic development was done, is still an opportunity, I think, to eliminate having two or three or four different economic development offices, you know, in the county.
Ilahou?
I think it's important to keep in mind, as, as we're looking at this, and just to start off, I've met with Jennifer on biotech issues and on some of the green jobs, and so I know that they are actively working and pursuing those for the area. As, you know, as the state starts to retool the economy towards green jobs, as the governor speaks about often, and Sherrod Brown and others in the state, I think we have an opportunity to really be out ahead. I think Jennifer is a great asset to the area, in who she's involved with, who she brings together. And it might not have direct benefits to the city in every case, but I think if we look at the community, the broader community here, this can be a chance, I think, for Athens to be ahead of the curve on this compared to other parts of the state. So as those green jobs do start to come in, and businesses look at Ohio as an area to locate, I think this can help, help that occur in this part of the state, and we can give some back to areas outside the city in Southeast Ohio.
Thank you, Ms. Allen, for speaking tonight. I have a question, too, just basic regarding the 501(c)(3) status. Does that then assist you or aid you also in perhaps pursuing other monies as well, or grants, or does that help assist you?
Yes. It really does give us that opportunity to go after additional grants.
Are you aware of some of the, what might be out there, or?
I think we, the traditional resources, like the Appalachian Regional Commission, or, you know, even within the Department of Development, where you need a 501(c)(3) entity to take on a particular grant for economic development. I mean, we've got, we have now this vehicle that we would be able to do that. And previously, under the chamber, we were 501(c)(6), which had some other strings. But we've partnered with other organizations, Community Action, for example, we partnered with them on looking at a research and technology park, in order to bring down USDA rural development funds for that. So nowhere to find them, and now we have the place to keep the dollars.
Thank you for speaking on that.
Sherrod?
Do you anticipate that you will be coming to the city to counsel year after year, or at some point, will you be self-supporting, or will the city always be involved in helping out financially?
Well, I think it, the organization itself is going to need support, financial support, and I think, yeah, it's gonna have to come from government, you know, from shared funding coming in through government resources. So I don't want to sit here and say what was said, I don't know, 12 years ago, that, "Oh, we'll be self-sustaining," you know, at some point. I think what may happen is that we may find other opportunities to bring in funding that would allow us to have a bigger marketing presence, for example, or have a larger entrepreneurship program. You know, we may be able to do, add some additional features as we bring in some dollars, but I don't want to sit here and say that that's not gonna, you know, that I'm never gonna ask for money again.
Okay.
Thanks, Sherrod.
Okay. So, oh.
Just to put my two cents in, being playing the role of mayor for less than a year, I'm very cognizant of the things that Jennifer's been doing, and I'm aware of the fact that we need somebody out there looking at economic development. My office, you know, I've got my head to the ground most of the time, so I don't have a lot of time to look at this stuff. Cognizant of the fact that there are things that we need to do if we want to go after certain aspects. I have the uptown people talking about, you know, Main Street, you know, but Main Street, you know, heritage stuff requires a certain criteria of expertise, coordination, and money invested. Not that Jennifer's gonna promise that, or anybody's going to, but the fact is, some of this stuff requires a starting point. I'm also been, over time, very surprised at the fragility of our business community. And I say that coming from, you know, from sitting there for the past year and seeing what everybody's trying to do. We may be behind broadband, I don't know, I haven't gone to the other counties, and I don't even have a computer that will do Wi-Fi, so I don't know. I am aware of the fact that we need to be doing something. I'm not sure who's gonna take that over if we don't set up something. The chamber in the past has been doing it, but they've been, it's been two horses there, the membership and then the economic development part. Historically, I'm aware of the fact that we always used to just have a percentage of the tourism money that came in, till it capped at a certain point. So we have control over the amount of money that goes in. Again, I sat through, like, two, three months ago, some, some people coming in looking for, I don't even know what it was, a call center, very cagey, came in, you know, looked real quick, and, and, you know, and departed, and I don't know what the results of that were, but I was stunned by the, the quick assessment that they gave us, and the fact is that we were, we were prepared, barely prepared to address their questions at that time. And the walkaway there is that we better have somebody online ready to do this. And again, it's, I don't know if it's Jennifer, but I do know that, you know, the speed and rapidity, which they came in and, you know, checked us off, you know, was stunning, and I always forget that I'm in a backwater little place that I love, you know, and maybe I should go to the coastline and pick my pace a little bit more. But we need some, we need an aspect, we need some kind of organization to do that. And we need, probably, it's gonna, it's gonna cost money to do that, because I don't think there's anybody in my office that can do it. I mean, I can, I've, I've got people full-time trying to chase the grants, and make sure we maintain the grants right now, much less go out there and knock on doors and, you know, water small businesses. So it's up to you guys, in that sense. You know, what you have is the bylaws and the operational plan there. If you think there's something better out there, then it should come forward then, but I haven't seen it yet.
Well, I think, I mean, as I've said before when we've looked at this, there's been, I think, a phenomenal effort in thinking through the organizational development of creating this. And I think that it does set up a legal structure for this relationship with, you know, the city, the county, the university, other economic development entities, other municipalities, to work together in a way that is gonna help us develop areas that have great potential for Athens, for the city of Athens and for Athens County. You know, I just, I know that people put a huge amount of energy into thinking this through and, you know, negotiating with the different groups that already do some pieces of this, about how can we make it all more effective together? So I will have, you know, a contract that we can, with the business plan attached to it, that we can have up for first reading next week. Okay? Thanks for coming. I have one miscellaneous, which is just to draw people's attention to the fact that when council passed Title 41, the Site Plan Review, we said we would come back to that in November 2008, and we had asked the chamber to help kind of monitor and work with any property owners who would go through that review process, you know, look at what are the, what are the costs, what are the timelines, how is it working? We've only had one project that has gone through that so far. There is one on the Planning Commission agenda coming up. So I don't know if we're ready to have that review yet. I mean, we could ask for that initial information and then set another date. Do you want to go ahead and set up a committee meeting sometime in November to get that initial review on the, you know, maybe one and a half projects that have been through it, or do you just want to give it a little bit more time at this point? it, or do you just want to give it a little bit more time at this point?
I'm not sure I understand what you're suggesting. So we have a site plan review procedure, process set up.
And we, when we passed that ordinance, because there were some questions about whether it would make development cost more, take longer, things like that, we put in the ordinance when we passed it that we would ask for feedback in a year. Ask people, how is it working? How has it gone? Have there been any glitches or hiccups, or, you know, places where it didn't intersect well with the rest of city code? And I don't know, Jennifer, do you have a sense about whether we have any information from that first project that's been through that's even worth reporting?
Yeah, I think so. I, if I may, I think I would suggest that we go ahead and have it in November and talk about, you know, has it prevented any projects from moving forward? And how was the first project or second project go? And then I think even with Paul's kind of input on what he's learning and picking up, we might be able to look at it more fully.
Okay. Well, then, I'll try to set that for a committee meeting sometime in November. If things look like they're really packed, maybe we'd set up a separate time so we could have more of like a roundtable discussion, which we have done sometimes when we had, you know, a lengthier topic that we really wanted to have some pretty open conversation about. Okay. Anybody else have miscellaneous for planning and development?
We're going to go out of order here.
Okay.
Were you finished?
Yes.
Thank you very much. The calls have some people that are appearing here and need to leave. I had a request to change the order of committee meetings. And next, we'll go on to the Transportation Committee and come back to the Finance Committee.
Okay. And I'm assuming the gentleman in the rear, you're here to speak to the street closing?
Yes.
Yes, okay, good. I'm glad that proved me right.
They left.
Just a guess. Would have been making my own presentation again. Tonight, we have some immediate as well as long-term items. There are just about four of them. And the first one that we'll, that we have is a street closing that is planned. A request has been submitted, and that is for Saturday, excuse me, Sunday, November 9th. And we have somebody here to give us some of the details on that. And you're, Mr. Borowski?
Yes, John Borowski.
Okay.
President and council members, thank you for letting me come and speak. My name is John Borowski, and I'm here representing the Ohio University Women's Center. And on Sunday, November 9th, we are planning an event called Walk a Mile in Her Shoes. It is the International Men's March to Stop Rape, Sexual Assault, and Gender Violence. And we would like to bring the march to the streets of Athens, Ohio. Mr. Brandon Coleman, one of my colleagues, contacted Ms. Paula Mosley about getting the streets closed to March from 11:00 a.m. to noon on Sunday, November 9th, a very short closing. We would march up Court Street, leaving from Baker University Center up to State Street, and then marching back up College Street, down University Terrace to South Green Drive, crossing over South Green Drive, and from there, marching on the sidewalk to the side of Peton Stadium, where we would end our march. The march, our beneficiary for the march is My Sister's Place. We are fundraising for that group. We are also collecting donations for them according to their wish list. So I'm just here representing the OU Women's Center, and I would like to thank you for placing this in your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any issues?
And do council members have any questions for Mr. Borowski? For the city?
A few things. It's my understanding that the group has requested a waiver of the fees involved. It does indeed require a parade permit. The closing of the street, because it's not an emergency, as at your purview, there would be a cost associated, since it's not one of the grandfathered parades in terms of having old streets in to bag off and close the streets, and then also to reopen them, and of course, the police department.
What's the usual charge?
This is for one singular hour, so that would be a significant reduction from what we had. For example, homecoming was about $700. But that was, again, for a greater period of time, and then the re-closing. I can get that to you. I can get the figure, an estimated figure.
That would be a help, to have the fee amount, so we know.
And you would walk up, you'd north, come up Court Street?
Correct.
And then turn right at State and then go back to College?
Correct.
Okay.
And they could parade on the sidewalk without, but they've, it's my understanding they felt it would be more significant if they ran the street.
By being on the street. Councilmember Bane?
I've been involved in Take Back the Night. They've used a roving closing, you know, where they didn't bag the things, and they just went through and closed it as, street by street, and it worked out reasonably well.
Oh, it's called a roving closing?
That's what I called it. I don't know what anyone else did. I mean, you didn't bag that, you didn't do anything. You just, they closed, the police would go along and close it.
So that might make it simpler, less fees, or less cost?
Is some expense from the city involved.
Okay. Councilmember Sands?
How many people are you anticipating?
We are expecting over 100 men to march. We are advertising this through Ohio University. We are also advertising as much as we can throughout the city. Even though you may not have seen advertising yet, I promise it is coming. But we expect over 100 male members of the Ohio University and Athens community to march in women's shoes up Court Street and back down through campus.
Oh, wait, you mean four-inch pumps or something?
I have my three-inch heels ready to go.
Did you have a, Councilmember Goss? Councilmember Goss?
Yeah, I just wanted to say thanks for helping to organize this. I hope we can work something out. I would hope that we could find a way to waive the fee for this type of activity.
All you have to do is make it part of the ordinance.
Okay. See what we can work out. And then this would, given the date, require an emergency clause to remove the 30-day waiting period, and then needing to suspend the three-reading rule, so we could begin that next week. And one thing, if you advertise, don't put the signs on the posts. Thank you. No request, thanks. Councilmember Goss?
Just one more question. Is this, this is new, I believe. Is this in Athens at least?
I'm sorry?
Is this new in Athens?
I believe so. I know Take Back the Night has been done every year, but as far as I know, I've only been in Athens for two years. Walk a Mile in Her Shoes is more so a new event.
And are the organizers hoping that this will become a yearly event?
Yes, yes. The Ohio University Women's Center would like to do the inaugural march, and we would like to make it an annual march.
Okay. Thank you very much for coming. Thanks for waiting also. Longer than usual evening.
I just want to make sure no one's suing the city for all the broken eggs.
So we understand that they will be signing a waiver?
Yes.
Reassure you, Pat, okay. Another immediate item that I will bring up is that the, this Saturday at 11:00 a.m. at 193 West Washington Street, we are having the street closing, which is why I'm bringing it up here, just to remind folks, and that's for the historical marker dedication where the Booker T. Washington and Olivia Davidson were married at 193 West Washington.
What time is that again? What time?
It's at 11:00 a.m. on Saturday. And thanks to all the people in the community who have worked to help organize that, and in the city to help make it happen. We appreciate it. More long-term items that I'd like to bring up is the proposed disposition of several of the vehicles in the Street Department fleet. And this has been discussed, as I understand, with the mayor and the safety service director, service safety director. And so there are disposing of several vehicles recommended, and transfer of one vehicle suggested, and then purchase of several. So I'll just very briefly describe these. One of the items is a '92 Ford Crown Victoria valued at $1,500 to dispose of that. A recommendation to also dispose of a 1996 Ford Crown Victoria, estimated value $1,500. Third one is the '89 Chevy three-quarter ton pickup truck for $800. And a 1985 Chevy four-by-four one-ton pickup valued at $1,200. A '92 Chevy S10 pickup valued at $700. There is one car, a 2000 Ford Expedition, that is suggested that might be used, rather than at the Street Department, that it be used by the access, the government access channel. So.
A terrible idea.
But you're going to go along with it, right?
I don't like it a lot, so.
Okay. Well, let me finish with a list, and then we can discuss if we get comments, because that's what I want, is feedback from, about this. The purchase items would be a three-quarter ton pickup with gas fuel with a lift gate, estimated value on purchase price on that would be $35,000. Three-quarter ton pickup diesel with external fuel tank, estimated purchase price of $40,000. And a compact utility truck, microgas or diesel, $15,000, estimated purchase price. And as I understand, the funds are available already in the 2008 capital funds budget, and we'll be seeking authorization for the two larger vehicles next week. So I'd open it up for comments, questions?
I don't know why the government channel needs sole use. Why can't that vehicle that none of the departments seem to want because of its size and gas usage just not be designated general use by everybody? And a city hall that needs such a vehicle and coded to lands and buildings?
That's a good suggestion. The police did use it last year when they had an emergency, snow emergency, and they needed a judicial SUV out there on the road. So it's something that, even though they already got rid of it from their fleet, it does come in handy.
So you would find it acceptable just to use it that way? That would be how I would prefer it, instead of having it coded just to the government channel. The government channel could use it, but so could everybody else. A vehicle of that size and lack of efficiency, I think, should be shared.
Okay. So that could go to? Is that one of those? Other questions or comments?
So how many trucks are we getting rid of, and how many cars?
We are getting rid of two cars and three trucks.
And you're asking for three trucks? I kind of lost count.
We're getting rid of three, well, do you count the Expedition as a truck or a?
I count it as a gas guzzler. I don't know.
It's a truck.
It's a truck. Two cars, four trucks.
Okay. But the Expedition isn't going, it's just moving.
It's moving.
Two cars, three trucks.
Because they probably don't want it either.
No one wants it.
Is it going to be?
Including me, loudly.
Is this going to be auctioned off at OU auction, or what?
I, I'm not, I don't know. Mayor Wile?
I think the discussion has been to try putting it out on like a government eBay situation rather than an auction. Mostly because it's, I think the university's only doing it once every two years, and we haven't worked well with them before. I don't think we've got a real good bargain on that. But, you know, disposal is any way you want, really, in that sense. Depends how much work we want to do to get it out there. We can put out the bid on the paper and see what happens.
Talking about $5,000 total value?
That's the estimate, right?
Estimated, yeah. Correct. Councilmember Goss?
Yeah, I think we're getting better with our vehicles in the city, probably by quite a bit, and I like the idea of getting rid of these old inefficient ones. I do see a lot of trucks driving around town that are mostly empty. So I am wondering if we might be able to see a justification for needing that number of trucks. And maybe I just, I don't, I haven't looked at this at all, and I'm not going to put up big roadblocks if we need trucks for a street department, because they do haul heavy equipment a lot. But I would like to know if possibly we could switch a couple of trucks to a slightly different duty, perhaps, if they're not used for hauling a lot of material or equipment instead.
Okay. So you'd like some further clarification, and then also description of existing use of?
Correct.
Use of the existing vehicles. Okay.
Chris, will we have three more trucks next year than asked for? Will we be cycling through? I mean, how many trucks are in the service garage, in the street?
How many trucks total?
Yeah. Could you, as long as you're answering Ilahou's question, let's ask that one also. A list.
Okay.
Chris?
Yes.
One of the discussions was to put this out on an electronic auction. Eventually, the idea is that all the departments should be dealing with their older trucks that way, rather than, sorry, focusing it through one. I know Andy brought up the idea, there's other departments that have older vehicles, that they, rather than have him deal with the disposal of it, they can do it. And this may create a better turnover. I know he's, I've had discussions with him about trying to reduce the fleet, and this is his start at doing that. But again, there are requirements for getting things around town.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments?
Did Andy talk with you at all about how it was going in terms of the replacement of the bucket truck? If you remember, you authorized a certain dollar amount that would, we had two before, we'll just have one bucket truck. But it also was contingent upon receipt of the insurance money. They've been having a little bit of difficulty trying to patch that together. I don't know if he's indicated if he might need a little more appropriated.
I wasn't sure if there was going to be more money needed appropriated. But he did, he did give me an update on that, that there had been some delays, yes.
Actually, I know this morning, they were looking at a demo of one this morning. Somebody up in Columbus brought one down, but I don't know what the price was. Conceptually, they wouldn't go for it unless they could use the money and any removal of the truck.
Right. It's still the play on the board, where they have a little difficulty between the insurance money and what was appropriated coming to the singular.
All right. So at the same time that we ask for clarification, we can ask an update on the whole fleet, then we can ask for the update on the bucket truck, too.
And if there are additional monies.
And any additional monies needed. Okay, thank you. Last item is to give you an update of the Transportation Advisory Task Force Group that's been meeting. That's, was a committee, a task, an advisory task force that's been in existence for several years, and historically was formed, as I understand, from some of the history that was related to meetings, to coordinate transit between the university and the city. We have representatives from the city, the county, community organizations such as HAVR and United Seniors that have been serving on this, also representatives from McDonald Transit who have been serving there. And so I just wanted to give you an update, and also, some city council members have been attending these meetings regularly, and I appreciate the input from the council members as well. And I wanted to let you know that the parking group, a small spinoff group of this advisory task force, has been looking at the, and soliciting some citizen input for about the 24-hour parking rule that exists in the city, and also considering the possibility of a small pilot project, perhaps, on, with only one street, to look at a possibility of a hang tag system that would, as I'm understanding it, that the group is interested in it, that would be an overlay on top of the 24-hour. We're not looking to eliminate the 24-hour parking rule in neighborhoods, but this would be in addition to, and it would be a pilot, and only on a very limited basis on one street is what the group's considering now. So I did want to share that information with all of you so that you're aware of it, and if you have other questions or comments that you've received from citizens, we'd really appreciate the input on that. There's been another group that's also been meeting that's been looking at pedestrian and bicycle safety issues, with the thought towards developing a long-range strategic plan for a bicycle plan, and incorporating this, you know, into our larger city comprehensive plan, and with an aim towards, they did establish some base goals of wanting, if within this plan, we could increase ridership by a certain percentage point, and, you know, increase ridership on bicycles, decrease accidents on bicycles by a certain percentage, developing a bike traffic demand plan, educating pedestrian and bicyclists on traffic laws, and then strategies to achieve objectives. And so that's what the Pedestrian and Bicycle Safety Committee have been looking at, just establishing some of those base goals that they could maybe incorporate into a strategic plan. And I'm bringing these up to kind of build a background also, that it looks that there might be an opportunity might be an opportunity to talk with the city, or the university, in the future, because they are considering developing a request for qualifications to maybe have company, or a company, select a company to work with them to develop a comprehensive transportation plan. And that might be an excellent moment for us to be able to look, work with them, to talk with them about our transit systems, and possibility of better coordinating those, which was the long-term goal of that Transportation Advisory Task Force, as well as to build in some of those other features of how could we coordinate university parking with city parking? How could we coordinate university bike plan and bikeways with, with city bikeways? So it looks like that, there might be an opportunity for that kind of discussion in the near future. And I'll continue to update you when we have our Transportation Advisory Committee meetings, or, and bring that to our Transportation Committee here, so that you're kept up to date on what's going on with, at that committee level. Councilmember Bain?
I hate to be tiresome. It's my nature. But it all, I, I think that at least 18 months ago, we had at least 24 citizens, citizens in here talking about safety on streets in the city, specifically asking for speed bumps or traffic calming, and I feel like I've been stonewalled. I've talked to the previous mayor, I've talked to this mayor, I've talked to you, and I think that if you have 25, 30 people in here saying that they want to be able to walk on the street without having cars zoom by them and almost hit them, or whatever, you know, in some areas, by Highland Park being one. And I hate to bring it up and be tiresome, but it just, I have to do it, because it's my area, it's my third ward people, they want the speed bump on Congress either taken out or fixed. They would like to have traffic slowed down, and I understand that we don't have that little device that says how fast you're going anymore. Maybe we need that again. Cable Lane, May Avenue, the East Side, maybe they've given up on it, I don't know. But basically, I mean, we had a large number of people come in here, and it just went boom. Okay. And, you know, two or three people complain about not being able to park in front of their house, we get response, but these people come in and complain, we get nowhere. So I think it's time to get that on the agenda in the city. We've got to do something about the, you know, maybe you can bring it up, the Transportation Task Force, because that seems to be where it's going. And I would remind you that they put in my driveway the little device, and they said, oh, it's not so bad, they're going 35 miles an hour in a 25 zone, and that's sort of like going 85 in a 60 zone or something. I mean, you know, it's just amazing how fast the traffic goes on the streets. And these people, who are my constituents, were not pleased, and they are probably saying, do something, don't just talk about it.
Okay.
And, you know, I think that maybe there's resistance, maybe they don't want to do it, maybe it's not popular. But the thing is, don't talk about IVs being put in on this hypothetical emergency thing when people are almost getting hit on a daily basis when they're walking their dogs by Highland Park. And so...
What happened to that thing?
Nothing.
Yeah. And I, it's, Paula, you probably have more up-to-date information on this. I know that the Congress Street bump was to be fixed, the speed bump.
I can check on that. I'm just going to speak more to the general issue there. The Sams has indeed, we put some more life into, and it's been kicked over law enforcement. So the police chief said absolutely that's his, what he needs to, you know, pursue and get that in place.
Well, wait, with applause.
We can direct, like, at the beginning of the year, I got a number of calls about speeding on East State Street, and they meant that, you know, commercial there. You just need to make us aware, and we can...
Well, I think the problem is residential areas where there are no sidewalks. You know, just go ahead and zero in on that. Malvin Road, any, any place that wasn't annexed as a subdivision has problems. And we're talking about not just a small number. Once again, I'll say, I hate to be tiresome, but if this is a pedestrian city, it isn't only around the university. There are a lot of people that walk for health, and they don't have very good, they don't have very good pathways. And I don't see in the near term, with the current financial situation, anything's going to happen. So what we do is ask the drivers to slow down.
And I would add, too, that I know Andy Stone's working on the Safe Walkways to School grant, which is a process, and has a lot of hoops to jump through. And I think, hopefully, as that process continues, that that will be something that will benefit the city as well. But it is a process.
My hair won't be going any grayer. I mean, we've been talking about Franklin Brer for a good long time.
Oh, I agree. I mean, we have similar concerns.
It just takes forever.
Right. Raritan doesn't have any sidewalks.
Yes, Raritan is certainly a fine example of one.
Right, very much so.
Okay. I appreciate the comments. Thank you. Councilmember Phillips?
And I'll chime in on this as well. The Near East Side neighborhood had some meetings with Andy, and actually did a pretty thorough planning process of taking a map of the neighborhood and identifying the areas where people chronically run stop signs and speed, and, you know, with a particular concern around some of the routes that kids do walk to school. So, you know, I know, I think, Paula, you were at one of those meetings where people were putting dots on the map to identify the dangerous areas. So I think that map still exists, and there was a, there were recommendations about the priority areas in the Near East Side as well.
Okay. Thank you.
What did happen to the machine? Do we not have that anymore?
Still there, it's slowly breaking down. I guess the batteries are going bad on it, and it's kind of obsolete. I'd like to actually try, I know we brought this up about midsummer, about trying to purchase two of these things. The, I know Andy suggested a couple of models, I think we're perking it over to the police department, see what they wanted to see as well.
I think they're effective.
Yes, part of the problem is that...
It's really gotten my attention when I find myself going faster than what I'd realized.
Part of the thing is they've miniaturized them. So the problem there is you, you don't want to make them too small that they've been carried off or turned upside down, which is what happened to the old one. Or if you, if you remember, two things happened. They used to have, they used to have air tires on them until somebody slashed them, and I think it got turned over one time on North Congress. So at that point, you put a boot on it, you make it heavy. These other, these devices that we've been looking at are basic things you attach to the pole, a telephone pole, just to be able to shoot down at it. You've got options of whether, everything from photo or text on it, to actually downloading it by computer. They can do counts, as well as just track times and everything like that, but, and I think the price I was hearing was $6,000 or something around there. Are maybe you off on that? What? For two? Okay.
Well, and I do know that that $120 speeding ticket I got with a camera on Carnegie Avenue in Cleveland was an extremely effective technique of slowing me down. Are we able to do any of that?
We can buy those cameras. I, I thought that was not allowed these days. I thought you had to ticket the driver and not the car.
Well, they sure ticketed me, and I got it in the mail. And I heard they had made like $300,000 on that one intersection.
I believe it. I do that, I know they do that in New York, too.
Okay.
But that, this is, from my point of view, this is one way that you actually augment the police force, rather than having policemen at each corner. Again, the last I, I discussed this was that the police department and the street have to decide what kind of model they need to work out, and then after that, where do you put it, and how often you change their location? Especially since it's, if it's not a wheeled device, then it has a different, it requires a different capability to stick it to a pole or attach it someplace.
Thank you. So we'll check further about those. Any other comments?
Is it, I'm sorry, regarding the parking? Regarding the parking temporary program, pilot program, is it possible, since we are such a small community, to expand it to more than one street? You know, if that subcommittee is interested in that, I mean, it is, it is a relatively small town. It might not be too hard to try on a couple other streets.
I don't know. We could check to see if that's workable. Pardon me?
Depends on the cost.
Yeah, it would. The cost of it, of implementing, but we could certainly say what would it be if we did, the one street, two street, three streets. Thank you.
Back to finance. Quickly, 2009 budget. The auditor is actually going to begin our budget discussion next week, next Monday, where she'll be talking about her projections for various funds for 2009. And all of you got in your mailboxes, I believe, not too long ago, a proposed timeline, and it actually began October 13th, so if we've mentioned budget, I guess we're on timeline tonight, so. But it is going to require weekly meetings for us to get this done. And so next week, I'm going to ask, I'm going to poll council to see if we want to come in half an hour early before meetings on Monday, or if we want to do it on another night. We'll talk about that on Monday. Think about it between now and then. That's budget for now.
Could we stop for a second? And Paul, can we do something about centralizing utilities, especially since the electric is projected to go up so much, and having the money go into a central area, especially with respect to those large users in the water and sewer plant?
Not sure that's my decision, but I have no objections.
Well, that is, I mean, I was wondering if it's possible, because it would be easier to monitor the, the cost increases. I don't know, I mean, I don't know that it's a decision that's a problem. I mean, it's just, who writes the PO, and where does the money get from?
Right.
Think about it.
All right. I think we'll maybe talk about it tomorrow.
Well, there are, there are several other utilities other than electricity, and there's a few more.
Natural gas.
Natural gas, and...
Yeah. Not gasoline, but the other things, ones that, where the costs are going to become substantial. It's in a big area where with a lot of other things, and then all of a sudden, we'll say, oh, this is, you've got 145, 1.5 times as much money for the electric bill, and then if we don't watch it, it'll be gone, and we'll be throwing money into it, which is where we go right now.
We're going to be here in two minutes, yes.
Right now, yeah. Okay. Just like you do at home.
First, we want to hear from the treasurer. Mary Ann McFlure is our treasurer, and she's, she's asked to talk to us about the actual job of treasurer, and how we deal with it as a city. Mary Ann?
Thanks, Jim. I'm not quite sure how much detail you wanted me to go into, but, but my main, one of the points I wanted to bring up is to just ask council to consider how the position, how much the position is funded for in terms of time, and what the expectations are of the treasurer. I've spent almost seven full years in the position, and have, have started some things, and I've had to follow up on things from other people, and I've talked to a lot of people about it, and it has felt to me that, that it's insufficient time for all of the things that I think the treasurer could be doing. I think if there, I think if, in a perfect scenario where there's no major transitions, where there's no technology changes, which we know doesn't happen, and, and the work can just be done on a regular cycle, the time is fine. And I think when someone's in the position who has the extra time to give when it's needed, it's also fine, as I did in the first few years, and I have not easily in the last two, because of changes in other parts of my life. But it, but it's pointed that out to me, you know, and that there's never been enough time for me to follow through on some of the education I wanted to pursue in terms of investments, because that's an area that I know some things about, but not enough in my mind. And, and I just, I think that the city, I've never had the opportunity to work with council on budget, which I've always thought, well, you know, that's a likely place for this person, because anybody in this position is going to have a facility with numbers, is going to have a familiarity with the, at least the investment income and the overall cash flow, not, you know, and, and could have a lot more familiarity with, with the funds and fund balances if there was more time to look at it. And you've got a position where you expect somebody to have a financial expertise, and then you fund it at the equivalent of a quarter time. Now, now I don't, there isn't any where it's written down as a quarter time, but, but the amount of money that it's been funded speaks to about that amount of time for the level of skill that you expect someone in this position to have. So, so I've had some concerns about it. I did ask for, and receive funding for an intern, for which I'm very grateful. The intern I have working with me is very good, very helpful, and is moving, helping me move things along. But there's a supervisory aspect to that as well, but, but there's still, having the extra, the extra time, the extra hands, does relieve some of that time. So I think, you know, there's a possibility that if the intern funding continues, it could, you know, offer up some more of the treasurer's time for some of these other tasks that I think have helped the city. And as I'm watching, all the things that have been happening these last few weeks like everyone else, it's just like, wow, you know, I wish I knew more about some of this before it started, and, and not that I see that we're in a, we're in a difficult position, because I think we're not. I think the places that, what money we have invested is, is very stable, and we're fine. But I, but I do have concern about it ongoing, because I see that there's always going to be changes in technology, there's always going to be transition in the office, and it seems like that there, even in just what small discussions I've heard tonight, there's, there's always a need for more communication between the people that serve the city. And, and anytime you can open up any of those opportunities, for any of you, for any of us, it seems to make sense to me. So, so I wanted to ask council to consider that in the budget discussion, and I don't know how much more you'd like me to say right now.
Ask her how much she wants.
How much do I want?
Cut right to the chase. What are we talking about here?
I, I think that a halftime without an intern would afford many of these opportunities, which would be...
So you're talking about doubling? All right. We can look at it.
Exactly. That's what I asked Mary Ann to come on.
I just think the position deserves to be looked at.
And in this consideration, I think we also need to look at, maybe work with Mary Ann and Bill, who was treasurer, and, and whether we want to develop a job description, or something that, as you said, make sure that channels for communication are, are developed and kept open, and opportunities for, for training are taken advantage of. So there's, there's aspects of this we need to look at, other than just increasing the salary. We have done some investigation and found that there is no definition in our code, or even in the Ohio revise code, that gives us much guidance. So it's a decision we as council need to make, and the decision needs to be made by February of next year. This is, this would, Mary Ann's second term is going to be up next year, and before the filing date, we need to adjust any wages or requirements that we would put on it. So we'll be talking about this a little while longer before we develop an ordinance, I think. I thank Mary Ann for coming and bringing it to our attention, and please think about it, council members, and we'll discuss it shortly.
Feel free to call me. I'm happy to share, answer questions, whatever.
Yeah, she's pretty easy to read, too.
Might want to wait till after Wednesday, but...
Okay. Don't call for it.
Jim, could I ask her a different question?
Yes, please.
Watching what's happening with interest right now scares me to death. I was just, you know, right now to get 3.5%, you've got to go out 10 years. And the short-term kind of things that I was used to investing the city money in, you're looking at way less than 1%. Is that what you're...
And new investments. I still have some that'll come in at 3.4% that, you know, were put in place last year.
You know, so budgeting next year for interest income, I think we really need to make sure that we do that properly, because it's going to fall through the floor, would you not agree?
We're probably looking at 50% of the year.
Yeah. So, anyway, that's something that, budget-wise, we've got to take a look at.
And the treasurer will be part of our budget discussion here in the next six weeks. Thank you, Mary Ann. Appropriations for, for next week that we need to, to consider. I have passed to me from the auditor, a list of things that have been discussed and need to be discussed. First of all, we have a loan from Hocking Valley Bank for some sewer work that we did. Which one is this, auditor?
This is Columbus Road.
This is the Columbus Road work, so it's not that...
Everybody.
But we are in a position to be able to pay $400,000 on that loan, which totaled to $500,000.
Right.
So we've come very close to paying that off, so.
That interest rate will be 2.6%, which is less than what we've been paying, $100,000 ago. ago.
Internal Service Fund and Auditor or Mayor, give us a quick rundown. Internal Service is the Mayor's Office.
No, it's actually, Internal Service has to do with the vehicles and the computer. Basically, part-time pays for part of Ron Forrest's job and all the service vehicles, mechanics for the service vehicles. So it's basically tied into the number of computers within departments and the number of vehicles within the city. Is that what you're asking?
It's three, it's three and a half positions, and it doesn't have any kind of revenue on its own. And what we've done in the past is transferred money from other departments based on the number of vehicles in those departments. And this year, there was no money budgeted from the Sewer Fund, and they obviously have several vehicles. And so they're going to come up short paying those salaries if we don't go ahead and appropriate money for that Internal Service transfer in the Sewer Fund. I'm asking for $55,000, which is probably less than we've, you know, budgeted in the past, I think, but it's pretty close.
So Kathy, as we go forward, could you kindly get us a level of, or some information on utilization of the vehicle, of the garage?
Like who uses it the most, or...
So you want to look at vehicle maintenance records? Is that what you're asking?
Well, I think they know, probably.
Well, no, I mean, is that what you're asking? Utilization in terms of...
I was asking her if she had any information about, because she, because they were talking about keeping the old format, and I guess I wanted, she and Ray, Kathy and Ray, and I was just interested.
Well, we worked up a new formula, but it's actually pretty similar to what it was, what the former mayor had been using. But yes, we can, yeah.
I'd like to know, just to get an insight into how, because I have a...
How many vehicles from...
...who uses it, yeah.
Okay.
There was a response to her work that I was asking the question.
Yeah, sure. We can go over that.
And this was, this is due to an oversight in last year's budget, this amount just wasn't budgeted?
Because we didn't know if we'd have it. It was just reorganizing did everything.
Right, well, we reorganized the Sewer Fund, number one, and number two, you know, the concentration on last year's budget was on Sally's personnel, personal services, and not, you know...
Internal Services.
Supplies and services, so.
Another appropriation that we have not discussed is $45,000 for a new chiller in the Law Administration Building. And I, Mayor, I assume that has to do with the air conditioner?
Yeah, it's basically the air conditioning system. We had to replace a cooling coil this summer, and they're saying one reason why the chiller is dying so much is because it needs, it's just clogging up, it's, coils are clogging up. The Law Administration Fund has some money that was set aside from the previous mayor for both in anticipation of this. If you remember, this was done, I believe, on some bond issue before my time, but...
It was a tax.
It was a tax, and they paid back the bonds.
And pretty much it's done, but this represented a chunk of money that was set aside for both this and an air conditioning slash chiller system and a roof eventually. But this will, this will cover the chiller right now. And so that money needs to be appropriated. It's, again, it's one of these things that, you know, it's heating and cooling and needs to be replaced eventually.
And it can only come out of, that fund can only be used on the Law Administration Building.
Yeah, so it's limited in that sense.
This can probably go unsaid, but can we make sure we get a really high-efficiency one, especially in terms of skyrocketing electricity costs?
Yes.
We'll probably look at that, that's for sure. I have no doubt we'll be looking at the best we can get in that sense.
Speaking of skyrocketing electricity costs, appropriation from the Sewer Department for, which is the wastewater treatment plant, actually, to the end of the year, they're estimating they need an additional $60,000 appropriated to pay for electric, electricity there. And the Water Treatment Plant is estimating $100,000 for electricity, chemicals, and gas, and I'm, we're still not sure...
Natural gas.
Natural gas, okay.
And one thing I want to point out, that in looking back at last year's appropriations, these funds were, these accounts were funded lower than they were last year, which we all know that's, you know, we can hardly stay the same, let alone increase the amounts. And so the Sewer Fund, the electric line, was actually almost $27,000 less appropriated in the budget for this year, so, you know, to ask for $60,000 more is really maybe only $30,000 more because of the costs. And for those three lines in the Water Department, it's about $63,000 less than what was appropriated last year.
So just about $40,000.
So as we said, you know, it's just one of those things where we, you know, concentrated on personal services and they weren't appropriated. Like I said, I just can't imagine that we would ever appropriate less from one year to the next, and we know how the costs have gone up. So in fairness, it's not because of misuse or mismanagement that their budget was set a little bit low for this year, and now they need it to get through the end of the year.
Did we all just miss that?
Well, I did and Rick did.
Yeah, I'm not pointing a finger at any one person. I'm talking up here, too. Did we all just miss that?
There's a lot of fund lines, you know, you look at all the fund lines in the...
I mean, how would you even know it? We got it the day before we passed it. I mean, you know...
We look at year-to-date and next year's budget.
No, no, down at that level, I'm talking.
Well, and, you know, the sewer amounts are huge, so you wouldn't, you know, necessarily notice. You know, last year, we had appropriated, say, in the Sewer Department for Electric, we, their budget was 209,000, almost 210,000, and this year it was 183,000, which still seems like a huge amount. And so, you know, you don't look at that and think, oh, man, they're going to be in trouble. And it's similar in the Water Department, so it's...
So we'll look at it this year.
These are large, large amounts of money in electric in particular, so in chemicals.
So is Alahu going to ask us? Okay, go ahead.
Probably not the same one.
Oh, my question is, is there any way, since we redid the Water Treatment Plant, we saved a lot of money by doing some electric, some changes? Are there other things that we can do? Can we hire somebody to go through those plants and say that you could do this, you could do that, you could go off-peak load on this, you could run the main processing during the off-peak hours?
I suspect that Crystal would...
Kathy, I think that's exactly on target. I really do.
Yeah, well, you know, at least we said it. We need to do something and reduce our costs.
I'd start with Crystal. That's just me. I suspect that she, you know, as far as the Water Treatment Plant, that she might have ideas.
And the sewer plants as well. I mean, I think that...
That's Jeff.
What would you do at home? Insulate? Do new windows?
Again, part of the thing with the Cool Cities is I want to hire an intern to do the audit where what we're doing, we need a benchmark to decide how we're going to reduce our carbon footprint slash energy. One thing I do require is to get that intern. I have been tardy in doing that mostly because I've been tied up doing other things. The other thing is also who to delegate it to.
Well, with all due respect, this might be a place for an engineer, you know, somebody who knows circuitry and, I mean, the Cool Cities thing will be, look at the, look at the stuff that's leaking out, but, you know, maybe the process itself needs to be addressed.
You just recommended insulation. Does that take an engineer?
No, no, I just said the other, Cool Cities is insulation.
It's big picture.
Yeah. And I'm thinking that maybe the process itself, maybe off-peak load processing, which would mean you'd do the most of the handling during the time when, and AEP might be open to a negotiated arrangement on that. Some people, other people are doing this, if you read the dispatch, you know what's going on in other places. Did I steal your thunder?
Not at all.
Okay.
Just, I guess to add to that, and I'm just going to throw this in here since we are approaching the budget, I think when we look at our capital, our, the money we put aside for capital improvements, we really consider hiring some sort of professional energy audit team to come in and look at at least a number of city buildings this next year so we can start to implement these different things that, it really, I think, will take a professional to be able to...
I have no problem with that. Just the question is how much money are you going to spend to do it? I mean, I don't know, I think you probably got a copy from Rich Campitelli about the money he expects to save from his lights that you guys appropriated last week, you know, and that's impressive, and so, and that's just one building and a new one at that. So I'm in agreement with this. Again, the next thing is, where do we start first? So, it's a good idea.
Maybe that, well, we'll look at the budget.
Part of the budget discussion.
Okay. And Auditor, I'm not sure I understand this next part, fuel charges for various departments. Is that a bill that we owe?
It's paid through the Mayor's Office, they get one bill, and then it's charged out, you know, the card's saved.
Is that a bill that we owe now, or...
This is for the rest of the year.
Just to finish up the year.
Go to the end of the year?
Yes.
Okay. General Fund, about $14,000. This is gasoline cost estimated to the end of the year. Streets, about $20,000. Recreation, $2,000. Water Department, $14,000. Garbage Fund, $200.
That's actually is...
System, water control officer.
Yeah.
Oh, that's littering.
Range pickup, ranger pickup.
And Internal Service?
Yeah. Transportation's a question mark. I think we have enough to cover that, don't we?
Well, that's what it, that's why I left it like that. I was just going off the spreadsheet, or not the spreadsheet, but the list that Shar had provided.
Yeah, part of the, I think part of the problem with that is we weren't sure when the buses were coming in. Once we get the new buses, which we have, which have arrived, we can actually bill the government for the reimbursement for the capital improvement of the bus, the capital outlay. We've covered about $115,000, if you remember, for the buses, two buses. I think we'll get about $80 and change back on that, which will give us some money that we'll be able to at least put back into the fund. So I'm hoping that we don't need anything on that. We'll take another look at it now that I've got, I think this was done pre-looking at our September numbers, so I'll have to check again. Do you know better?
No.
Oh, okay.
I'm just going by what you gave me.
Okay.
Okay, so this would be, we'd see this as an ordinance or maybe a couple ordinances on Monday.
One thing I forgot to put out there, and if you want to separate the ordinances, you know, that's fine by me, the money for water and sewer for the electric bills probably needs to be suspended on Monday if possible.
And I think the OU Fuel Bill, too, because that's what we're trying to cover. Some of these things, some of these particular funds are zeroed out right now. Some are good, but to pay the entire bill, we need to, we need to take it from Mayor's Department at that point.
Okay. We'll look at it, talk to people. Okay. Any other questions about these appropriations? And remember, Bain mentioned the possibility of dealing with some personnel reductions. We have a recommendation...
Oh, I just, I remembered, okay.
We have a recommendation from the Personnel Director's Office to remove some positions that are not currently filled and have been, been unfilled for the entire year, some of them even in the last year. And there's a General Secretary in the Code Office, one of the maintenance techs in Streets, the Assistant Director of Recreation in Arts, Parks and Recreation Department, the Animal Control Officer, which is a member of the Police Department. Actually, two firefighters positions have been empty for years. A couple of years, anyway.
Five, seven.
So this is, these are changes that are recommended, again, by the Personnel Director, but for all staffing, if a position is not filled for a year, it really shouldn't be carried over as an empty position. Council has the opportunity to recreate those positions at some later date if the need arises. So, Mayor?
I would point out, most of these are not budgeted. There's no money budgeted in these lines. I think some have never, haven't been budgeted as long as I've been watching the budget. Other ones have, like the Animal Control Officer, where it was zeroed out earlier in the year. The idea is just to clean up some of the mix here. I assume we're not anticipating increasing our payroll or a lot of staffing in the future at this point. You can always do it at a later date, depending on what things are going on.
Any questions about that particular issue? Okay. Remember, Bain, do you have any miscellaneous then? Okay, we're done.
Oh, Jim.
Oh, I'm sorry.
One thing I wanted to throw out there is the ordinance, can we start that ordinance through, authorizing the Auditor to reduce the appropriations for the end of the year?
I hate that ordinance.
I know. Well, this is the short version.
Oh, good.
That just gives me permission to do that without having to go through and try to list everything for Council.
That's better.
Did this last year. It was 014807. We can just use that for this year. I'd appreciate it. Thanks.
And I think I mentioned to the Auditor that when we have first reading, I, and maybe even farther than that, I really appreciate that she explain again the logic behind this, which is not hers. It's imposed, it's a task imposed upon her office, but she does understand it better than me.
So you might hang on to that big unappropriated balance sheet that I gave you today, and the sheet attached to the back of it, you know, might help we start that.
Okay. We are done with financing personnel.
All right. The Environment Committee, basically, really just one thing on the agenda for tonight, wellhead protection, and this won't take long because there will be an opportunity for discussion on these changes later in the future. And these are continued revisions to the wellhead protection plan that the wellhead team has been thinking about for quite a while now, for a number of months, and going over different revisions of. I'm just going to go through a list of the changes that are being requested. The wellhead protection team, just to remind people, it consists of a sanitarian, he's responsible for enforcing the wellhead protection plan, there's a representative from the Mayor's Office, usually, Nick Carr, and also Crystal Canard from Water Department. We're updating some of the definitions, and we're also going to update the registration process so that it's a little more efficient in terms of the sanitarian that is responsible for enforcing it. We're going to look at personal storage facilities and make sure that none of those in the wellhead protection area are being used for regulated substance storage. There's also a section on training of facility operators if there are non-conforming facilities in the wellhead protection area, to make sure that they know how to handle the substances they're using. There will be inserted in the language guidelines for fill operations to make sure that what's being put into the wellhead protection area is clean, uncontaminated, and safe for the wellhead. There's a section on above-ground fuel storage tanks, just to make sure that they're safe and that they're not sitting unused in the wellhead protection area for extended periods of time. And we're also looking at a couple of fines to be added to the ordinance. One would be for illegal dumping. Obviously, we don't want people dumping unknown substances into our wellhead area. And also possibly a fine for, if any contamination does occur to the wellhead. And this will be passed on to the Law Director for review, and also I'll be meeting with the business community to discuss these changes and make sure that the sky won't fall when these go through. Questions?
Question is about fill. There was an example of a, of a fill that was inappropriate in a lot this year, and there've been some earlier where there was asphaltic material in one case and then other materials of dubious origin. And I just wondered, what way can we get a better handle on that instead of doing it ex post facto? Have you guys done any thinking about that?
Yes, I believe, I believe the update, and I'll get the wording to you.
It'll all come at once, then. In other words, there will be a permit for filling in the wellhead protection area or some way to check? I mean, once it's filled, unless it rises to the surface, a big hunk of asphalt, what are you going to do? You don't even know.
And this is, this is exactly what it's addressing. It's, it's saying that there has to be a written notice of intent to fill.
Okay.
And that will pass through the Health Department. So Mike Cooper, who's enforcing it...
So Mike will have, Mike will have. Because the most egregious examples have been exactly, you know, sort of just come in with a truckload.
And then that's exactly what we're trying to address here.
Thank you.
And right now, when you have that example, so far, the only thing you do is tell them to get it out of there. And if we hadn't seen it and it had gotten covered over, that would have been a problem. So I really think there needs to be a substantial fine.
Sounds like he's got it.
Attached, yeah.
He's got it under him.
And then that's, that's the hope, that it will keep that from happening. As I understand, the materials were removed pretty quickly as soon as Mike contacted them, so, so they're not still there, and that's been taken care of, but hopefully this will keep that from happening in the future.
My example was pre-Mike, but if it were currently, it would be, I just put a hunk of it on the Mayor's desk.
The next thing I was, it's getting rather late. I was going to have a brief discussion on the Green Fleet's ordinance, but I'm going to sit down and meet with the... to sit down and meet with the administration sometime this week, hopefully, and bring that back to committee two weeks from now, hopefully with a final version that will be workable, so. Unless anyone has any miscellaneous.
I get to come on much, Rachel.
All right, we're finished.